1:00 and we're going to call to order, pardon me, the meeting for the Ottawa City Commission for Wednesday, February 3rd. Would you please call the roll? Our brand new clerk, Melissa Reed, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kayler?
Present.
Commissioner Crowley?
Present.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Present.
Commissioner Dorgudskin?
Present.
Commissioner Wigan?
Oh, Commissioner Wigan, I think you're on mute, but we see you there.
Okay, I'm still present. Okay.
I'm still impressed that Melissa's desk is completely empty, so pretty impressive. Way to go, Melissa. So, I want to start out with that welcome. Welcome to Melissa and to everybody else who may be joining us this evening. We appreciate you being part of the process. If you're watching this after the meeting is over and you have a question, please don't hesitate to call City Hall and ask those questions. We are here to represent you as citizens of Ottawa and really want the best for our community, as I know you do too. So, thank you for being here. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God. Let's liberty.
And justice for all. Our invocation tonight is going to be led by Commissioner Dorgudson.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I won't read it, but if you all can join me, and you may have to put your Zoom on mute so it doesn't have different speeds, but if you can all join me with a universal prayer, the Lord's Prayer.
We will do.
All right. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thy name is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you. I honestly, I think in 10 years, I'm not sure that we've ever done that. And I should have asked at the beginning, are we trespassers or are we? Which one are we? Because we all have different versions. So, thank you. It was fun and kind of a fresh, good start for us all to participate in that. Thank you, Commissioner Dorgudson. At this time, I'm going to have our city clerk, please read the disclosure. It's such a fun disclosure that we get to read at the beginning of every one of our meetings. So, Melissa, you've got the floor.
This is Melissa Reed, city clerk, and I will be providing information for remote access, as well as procedural guidelines that will be followed for this meeting. Due to the efforts to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, physical access to the city commission meeting will be restricted. In accordance with the Kansas Open Meetings Act, COMA, the meeting can be viewed live on Channel 23 and via Facebook Live, or listened to by dialing 1-312-626-6799, and entering me being ID 979-6273-3505. Guidelines for this meeting are as followed. Each member of the public, staff, or presenter is required to state the individual's name and title, if any, each time the individual begins speaking or voting, so that the individual can be identified by remote listeners or observers. Citizens that submitted comments by 4:00 p.m. today to publiccomments@ottawakansas.gov were given to the city commission to be read during public comments or during discussion on an agenda item. The commission must describe at the beginning of the meeting the process that will be used for a closed or executive meeting pursuant to KSA 75-4319 and amendments thereto.
Excellent. Thank you so much for reading that. Appreciate it. Now is the time in which that we move on to our consent agenda, which includes the minutes, our agenda approval, and is there? Is there a motion to approve that?
Commissioner Crowley made that a motion to approve.
Commissioner Valen.
Commissioner Wigan will second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say fine. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, on to our regular agenda. This is the time in which that we invite our public to come in and have a conversation with us if they'd like. Generally, if we're in person, we invite them up to the mic and let them kind of visit with us, or ask them to visit with us, not let them, ask them to visit with us. As Melissa had indicated in the disclosure, we ask you if you want to address the city commission, to please let City Hall know in advance. Melissa, is anybody at this time registered for city or for public comment?
We have none at this time.
Okay, great. Well, then we will move on. So, at this time, I'd like to give commissioners a chance to declare any conflict or communication that they may have had that would influence their ability to consider today's issues impartially. Commissioners, is there any declaration that you would like to make this evening? Great, we will move forward. First item on the agenda, item 10.
Board and commission assignments for 2021 to 2022.
The mayor and the commission have chosen to be assigned to the following boards and commissions, and they are as follows. I actually do have one clarification on there, actually one correction on there, and that is the very first one. The Airport Advisory Board, Mayor Pro Tim Crowley will be serving on that board. And then we'll have for the Library Board will be Commissioner Wigan, for the Chamber of Commerce, Mayor Pro Tim Crowley, Kansas Municipal Energy Agency, Mayor Kayler, Ottawa Main Street Association, Commissioner Wigan, Neighborhood Revitalization, Commissioner Dorgudson, Ottawa Memorial Auditorium Advisory Board, Commissioner Dorgudson, Play Task Force will be chaired by, or not chaired by, but will be, have a seat filled by Commissioner Skidmore, and Prairie Pos Animal Shelter will also have a seat filled by Commissioner Skidmore. Commissioners, did I get those correct? Great. Well, it says we have to approve the agenda, but I don't think we have to approve that. I'm looking at Richard. I'm like, I don't think that's necessary. We're not approving that. I'm just going to go on, and we have to go back. We'll clean it up next time. So, new business. Item 12 on our agenda.
Proclamation recognizing February 4th as 2021 as Optimist Day.
The proclamation recognizes those who make a difference in our community and encourages a greater exchange of ideas. Richard Jackson, one of our former mayors, thank you so much for being here, will accept this proclamation, which will be read by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley.
And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas volunteers working with young people who are our joy of today and our hope for tomorrow are exuberant representatives of the potential to be reached and dreams to come true, they are also unbounded in their enthusiasm to use their own talent, skills, and hard work to make difference in others' lives. And whereas members of the Optimist International will celebrate Optimist Day throughout the world the first Thursday of every February to promote their efforts in helping and recognizing the young people that make a difference in their communities, and who will encourage a greater exchange of ideas between young people and adults. And whereas there are 2,400 optimist clubs with more than 70,000 members in Optimist International and optimist members throughout the world that carry out more than 6,500 service projects that serve 6 million young people a year. And whereas the Franklin County Optimist Club was established in September 26, on September 26, 1974, and currently has 35 members. And now, therefore, the governing body of the city of Ottawa, Kansas, does hereby proclaim the first Thursday of February 2021 as Optimist Day in the city of Ottawa, Kansas. May this day instill pride in our city's optimists for all their accomplishments and for, and for the impact they have to truly made a difference in others' lives. Signed this third day of February 2021 by our mayor, Sarah Kayler.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Crowley. We appreciate you reading that. Mayor Jackson? We'd love to hear your comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, for taking the time to sign the proclamation. You may have noticed on there, we said Franklin County, and we're trying to go countywide. We do have a club that we've got started in Wellsville, and trying to get that built up and like to spread throughout the county. We have about 35 members currently. We meet twice a month, once here in Ottawa at the restaurant, the new restaurant downtown, I can't think of it, on Stone, the Bollin Alley. Yeah, anyhow, that's where we meet, once a month, and then Wellsville. Once a month, we also do Zoom for those that, for those that can't attend. Actively involved, working with kids, unsung heroes, students of the month, water, healthy, healthy snacks, earbuds, those types of, types of things that are, that are needed in our schools, and we're always looking for other ways to be involved, to help out their, help out our school system, help out our teachers. And with the pandemic, obviously, we have to do things a little bit different, but it also brings on different needs and challenges within the, within the community. So, those are some of the things that we're, that we're doing and would like to continue. And if any of the Commissioners have any ideas of ways that we can be more, more helpful and useful to the youth, appreciate it if you let me know. We also have Dale Fox is on, and Dale's been a past Mr. Everything, past president, lieutenant governor, and governor of the state. And I think he lives every day, his passion for, for optimists and passions for, for youth, and we'd all like to think that's our, our passion and working with our young, young people and future leaders of the community.
Great point. I mean, the youth really are, they're what's going to take Ottawa to the next level. So, thank you so much to the optimists. And thank you, Mayor Jackson and Dale, for being here tonight to talk a little bit about Optimist Day, and we hope that tomorrow, which is officially Optimist Day, is a great one for you and for the entire nation. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're going to move on to item 13 on our agenda.
Ordinance authorizing bond financing for two waterline projects.
So, this ordinance authorizes the issuance of GO or general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $3,100,000 for the cost of certain improvements to the city's water system. And I believe that David, David, pardon me, David Artaberry and Tyler Ellsworth will be addressing this matter tonight. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is Tyler Ellsworth with Cutec Rock, the city's bond council. As the mayor indicated, item 13 is an ordinance authorizing bond financing. But before I get into the specifics of what are actually items 13, 14, and 15 on your agenda this evening, I want to see if David Artaberry is on the call. I'm not sure that he joined us tonight. If he is, I don't think he's here. Okay. Well, okay. Then I think, just to provide a very brief background, Mr. Artaberry and I visited with the Commissioners at their study session the last two weeks to talk about refunding opportunities that have the potential to save the city some interest costs. The city has previously financed two waterline projects and a sewer project, and has financed each of those projects with loans through the state revolving fund. And those loans can stay in place. You don't need to refinance. But if you do choose to refinance, there are considerable interest cost savings if we issue general obligation bonds of the city and pay off those existing loans. So, that's the background to three items that are on the agenda here. And maybe that's a good place to pause before I go on and just see if there are any general questions about the financing plan here.
Commissioners, do you have questions for Mr. Ellsworth regarding, really, items 13, 14, and 15? And they have been discussed in the last couple of weeks. Just, are there any questions? Seeing none, I think you should move forward if you've got more to tell us, Tyler.
All right, thank you. Yeah, just briefly, on each of these agenda items, items 13 and 14 authorize bond financing for each one of these projects. Of course, there are already loans outstanding that finance these projects, but you have to take the, of specifically authorize the issuance of bonds to finance these improvements. So, item 13 is an ordinance authorizing bond financing for the two waterline projects. Item 14 is a resolution authorizing bond financing for the sewer project. And then item 15 is a resolution authorizing city staff, our firm as bond council, and Mr. Artaberry's firm as your municipal advisor, to start the process of a refinancing bond issue. And with your approval this evening, we would work with staff to put the bond sale together and to go out and seek bids from purchasers of those refunding bonds and bring those bids back to you at your March 17th commission meeting.
Commissioners, any additional questions for Mr. Ellsworth?
Mayor Kayler?
Yes.
Not necessarily, thank you, not necessarily a question, but just to, I know we want to believe that everybody watches all of our meetings, including our study sessions, but some people may have not watched our study session and just hearing this for the first time, just to be sure, and I'm on, everybody understands, I guess, here is 13, 14, and 15 are not GO bonds we're going after. They're bonds that we're refinancing to lower the interest rates and save money for the city of Ottawa. Am I correct there, Tyler?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make that, you know, obvious to the people watching, so they weren't thinking that we were pursuing some more funds.
Great. I mean, that's a really great point, Mayor Pro Tim, or Mayor Pro Tim Crowley, is that these are not new projects. You're not going to see a new water system. You're not going to see a new sewer system. That's just not going to happen. However, we've already, we already have those things, and we can save the taxpayer a tremendous amount of money by refinancing. And to the point of several percentage, I mean, points, correct? I mean, we're going from like a four to a little over a one, right?
It may not, it may not be quite that much, Mayor, but it is a considerable savings over the remaining 18-year term or so of those loans. And when we looked at this earlier this week, in the prior week, Mr. Artaberry was estimating that the savings would be, I think, between $240,000 and $370,000, depending on how the financing, the refinancing is correct. So, there are definitely considerable savings to be had.
And that amount is over the life of the bond, not just an instantaneous.
Correct, correct. That's a very good point.
Okay, great. Any initial questions regarding item 13 on the agenda?
Mayor Kayler, Commissioner Skidmore? Yeah, I appreciate what Mayor Pro Tim Crowley said, that we've spent a lot of hours, not only in the study sessions, but each of us, I'm sure, at our own homes, ported over these numbers, and it's not a flippant decision we're doing here. Commissioner Dorgudson and I both work on both sides of the lending side, and this is a different position for us, being on the borrower's side. And so, I trust everybody knows we've let this over and carefully thought this through, and it is a good opportunity for our community. So, if that will make a motion, we approve item 13 on our agenda.
Commissioner Skidmore moves that we approve item 13 on our agenda. Is there a second?
Commissioner Dorgudson will second.
Commissioner Dorgudson seconds. Is there any discussion? If not, we will proceed to vote.
How do you vote, Commissioner Dorgudson?
Yes.
How do you vote, Commissioner Wigan?
I will, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crowley?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Mayor Kayler?
And I vote yes. Motion carries. And that moves us on to 14, which is very similar to 13.
Request for approval of resolution authorizing bond financing for Eastside Interceptor Sewer Project.
This resolution authorizes the construction of certain, or construction of certain improvements to the city's sewer sewage system, and authorizes GO bonds to provide financing for such improvements, including the prepayment of the loan. Tyler, is there additional information that you want to give us on this particular project?
Not on this particular front, no. But I'm happy to.
So, for the listening public, this is the same thing we did on item 13, except for it's on item 14, and we're going to put them all together and refinance. So, we have to do every single item individually. Commissioners, are there comments or questions that you may have for Mr. Ellsworth? If not, I will entertain a motion if there is one.
Madam Mayor?
Commissioner?
This is Commissioner Dorgudson. I move to approve the request as described in item 14 of the agenda.
It's been moved by Commissioner Dorgudson.
Commissioner Crowley will second.
And Mayor Pro Tim Crowley, seconds. Is there any discussion among Commissioners? If not, we will proceed to vote.
Do you vote, Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crowley?
Yes.
Commissioner Wigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Dorgudson?
I will, yes.
And Mayor Kayler?
And I vote yes. Motion carries. That moves us on to item 15 on the agenda, which is one of the list of things.
Request for approval of resolution authorizing the public sale of general obligation bonds.
This resolution authorizes the public sale of approximately $6,060,000 in general obligation bonds, series 2021-a. Mr. Ellsworth, would you like to address this?
Sure. Mayor, as I mentioned earlier, this is the authorization for your city staff and our firm as bond council, and Mr. Artaberry's firm as your municipal advisor, to put together the bond offering, putting the offering document together and circulating that to prospective purchasers of the bonds, and soliciting bids from purchasers, which, if you approve this resolution this evening, we will bring those bids back at your March 17th meetings for consideration.
Commissioners, do you have questions of Mr. Ellsworth? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion if there is one.
Commissioner Crowley will make the motion to approve item 15 as stated in our agenda.
Mayor Pro Tim Crowley makes the motion. Is there a second?
Commissioner Skidmore will second that.
Commissioner Skidmore seconds. Is there any discussion among Commissioners? All right.
Mayor, we might, Commissioner Wigan, we might do, Mayor Pro Tim mentioned about the previous one, this is just a refinancing, it's not more borrowings.
That's correct.
Any other discussion? Then we will proceed to vote.
How do you vote, Commissioner Wigan?
I will, yes.
Commissioner Dorgudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crowley?
Yes.
And Mayor Kayler?
And I vote yes. Motion carries. That moves us on to item 16 on our agenda.
Request for approval of funding agreement with Franklin County Development Council.
This is the funding agreement for 2021, and Paul Bean is listed on here to have a discussion with us or to, to address this matter, and I'm not sure if city manager Neistad had comments too or not. I wasn't, sorry, I didn't ask ahead of time about that.
Just as, before Paul speaks, this is our annual agreement for Economic Development Services with Franklin County Development Council. It actually is a joint agreement. Once you approve this, we'll send it over to the county for signature, and they'll approve it. And what it does is commit both the city and the county to allocate $64,375 per entity to Franklin County Development Council for Economic Development Services. Now, what, what the public needs to know is that there is also a mix of private money in the FCDC, and you can become a membership, you can become a member in that and help be a part of economic development. And Paul serves as the executive director and is our point person in trying to bring business and jobs and capital investment to Ottawa. So, Paul, there's your opening.
Thank you, Richard. You're a good salesman. I appreciate, on behalf of the board and our industry community, I appreciate greatly the support that we receive from the city and from the county. And as, as Richard indicated, we also seek and receive tremendous financial support from our industrial partners. This is a wonderful agreement, an arrangement that's benefited the community for years, and happy to answer any questions any of the commission has moving forward.
Commissioners, do you have questions of Mr. Bean?
Commissioner Skidmore, just to make sure this agreement includes the new language with regard to the reserves, is that correct? And I do appreciate the great public-private partnership we have with FCDC. We saw it evidenced when we built Legacy Square, and that was just a one-time shot, but with economic development, it's a long-term relationship. So, I appreciate Paul, what you've done for our community, excellent communication with everybody, I commend you for that. And with that, I'll make the motion, we approve item number 16 on our agenda. Thank you.
Commissioner Crowley here. I, I too, I had a, I had a long conversation with Paul today. He's, like Commissioner Skidmore said, he is willing and able with any information that he has that could be fruitful for our, not only our community, but the surrounding communities. And I too believe that we have the right man for the job, and he's doing the right things with our taxpayer money. So, with that being said, I will second the motion.
So, there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the funding agreement with FCDC. Is there any discussion among Commissioners? I, I do want to point out, and I've really wrestled with this. And as I've said before, I don't, I really, really like the idea of us building an economic development reserve fund for our community. We did not have that when I joined the city commission, and it is, gives me great heartache that we are backing up on that. That doesn't mean it won't happen, but there's no guarantee that it will happen at a minimum. Our previous money, funding agreement required FCDC to take 10% of the allocation that they had received from the city of Ottawa and from Franklin County, and put that into a reserve fund for economic development. And my concern is, is that, and I have the utmost respect for Paul, and I know Paul knows that, and I think what he is doing is amazing. But the reality of it is, is that Paul may not always be here, but the agreement might. And actually, the wording in the agreement will probably stay. And so, I am certainly not against FCDC. I think FCDC is doing great things. In fact, since we have developed a FCDC or actually supported FCDC, I think that they have done amazing things for our community, and I think we're really just getting started. But because of the fact that there is no guarantee that there is going to be any money put aside for economic development in a reserve fund, I'm probably going to vote no tonight. Commissioners, are there any other comments?
Commissioner Wigan, go ahead, go ahead, ladies. Commissioner Dorgudson, I, I expressed my thoughts on that, on that very issue at our study session, and I had anticipated that we'd have, that the, that we'd have, be able to vote on the language to be a part of the, of the agreement. But the agreement as a whole, I am, I am in favor of continuing with the FCDC partnership as it has been, and I believe you are as well. I, and the idea that is more of a goal to achieve that, and as we indicated, extraordinary expenses are expenses that would not be a part of your operating income, and it can be used to spend on those items. I, at this point, I'm not sure how I'm going to vote on the multiple. I, at this point, I'm not sure how I'm going to vote on the motion, but your point is well taken, Mayor.
Commissioner Wigan, I believe that you had a comment?
I did. We get the review, we talk with Paul on a monthly basis here at the commission. We get to review this document each year. I know the board of FCDC and Paul, they have a goal of building reserves so that they can help recruit and keep state-of-the-art equipment and technology here. And I know the reasoning for the desire of the commissions to develop reserves, and it's always been since, for the last fifteen, twenty years, to allocate ten percent of that as reserves. And my argument has always been, give me ten percent more money then, because I'm not asking you for more than I need. So I am going to do the best I can with what I have, and I will do that judiciously and efficiently and develop reserves the best I can. I think what Paul and Paul is asking of us tonight is to, let's not be, I don't think critical is the right word, but saying that we're going to give you this money, but save it. And so I know they're, they're conservative with how they spend, and they dwell over how it's spent and report to us how it's spent. So for that reason, I'm in favor of this speech, and we'll vote yes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Wigan. And again, my, my vote no is not a no against FCDC. It is a vote again, it is a vote for growing our economic development fund. And when we do that, when we set aside that, there's no guarantee it's going to happen. And I don't think that twelve thousand dollars is going to make a difference every single year, but in ten years, it really does. And if we don't save now, and we save incrementally, we're going to be in trouble again in ten years. And that's where we were ten years ago when I joined the city commission. We did not have a reserve.
Madam Mayor, this is Commissioner Jorgensen again. And, and the, the idea, and it was a goal to start it on the war chest, and it was not there ten years ago. And it was something that we knew that we had to develop. I have nothing against, I think Paul's doing an excellent job. I think the present board is doing an excellent job. But as you said, removing that language is, sets a precedent for future contracts and getting away from where that has been the last ten years or thereabouts.
I believe that, and I can't give, I can only give you just the Robert rule of order, just like on a really basic level. And I believe that when there's a motion and a second on the floor, we have to go ahead and vote for that. Now, if we wanted to, we can make changes after that. I hear Commissioner Jorgensen saying that he thought that we were voting separately. And so I'm not sure where you're standing on that. Is that still something you're willing to entertain, Commissioner Jorgensen? Or do you want to just go ahead and vote? Because we're going to vote regardless.
Okay. Well, in that regard, I would move to amend, and if there's no, if there's no second, I guess that answers the question. But I wish, I will move to amend the motion to add, add back the language for the ten percent clause into the contract.
Is there a second on that amendment? I will make the second. And so the motion has been amended to request or to approve the funding agreement with FCDC, including the ten percent reserve, the ten percent from the city, ten percent of the funds allocated to the city put into a reserve account. Do I have that correct? Want to make sure.
That's right. Yes.
Is there, is there discussion?
This Commissioner Wigan, only comment is, if I recall, Paul, the county has already approved of the recommendation, recommendation of FCDC and Paul to change the language to what we're discussing tonight. So they're already in favor of what this motion is opposing.
They have, they haven't done a formal vote on it, but they have stated they're, they're in agreement with the wording change in the agreement, yes. So if, if the city decides to stick with the ten percent, then the county reserves, I think, the right to do a separate agreement if they so choose. They're waiting to see what the city decided, and then it'd be up to the commission to decide if they want to go ahead and sign a joint agreement as you present, or if they want to do their own separate agreement.
Yeah, that's my understanding too, Paul, that that would be how it would, how it will go. And as, I hate to even steal the thunder of Commissioner Jorgensen, but the city of Ottawa is also, all the citizens of the city of Ottawa are also citizens of Franklin County.
That's correct.
Commissioner Crowley here, if I may, Mayor. Paul, I, I, just if you could riddle me this, does, does growing your reserve conflict with anything that you may need to do to get your job done that we ask of you?
Yeah, the rationale behind this, we talked about this in study session, is there's a couple of years, for example, twenty eighteen, FCDC had a surplus of well over ten percent, about eighty four thousand dollars, and we put all of that in reserve. And then I think the year, the next year, we had a reserve or excess of thirty four thousand, put all of that in a reserve. So put more, well, well more than ten percent as, as written into the agreement. The intent is not to drain the reserve. The intent is to, anytime we have a surplus, is put that in reserve. If however, there's a year where the FCDC board feels we need to invest some money, just as we did this past year, we have done research to identify target industries that are a good fit for our community and vice versa. And we have also invested a significant amount of money on marketing, because we've been pretty much reactive, and we're trying to be proactive in our marketing of Tempe Park as well as Franklin County. So there might be a year where we want to spend a little extra than we took in. For example, last year, we generated a hundred thousand more than we did the previous year. So we didn't just rob the reserve to do those things. We, we raised significant amount of money and took some from to do that. The budget that was presented to the city a year ago showed a draw of fifty four thousand out of reserve. We ended up pulling seventeen thousand out of reserve. So even with the significant expenditures that we did not plan on, we still reduced the draw significantly. So the intent is never to drain this reserve, quite the contrary. The intent is to allow FCDC the flexibility to better position ourselves to land industry and promote in growth when we need to. It, for example, if, if we want to do something like we did this past year, the requirement to put ten percent in reserve means we put ten percent in reserve for those expenses which meet the criteria, and then turn right around and pull maybe twelve percent, I don't know the numbers, pull twelve percent out, that seems a little disingenuous to me versus if we have a surplus, which is always our goal, that goes in the reserve versus if we don't have a surplus, we don't have the funds really to put into reserves such as Commissioner Wigan said. So trying to give the, the organization and what the board's seeking through me is flexibility on those funds. Their objective is most certainly not to drain the funds. And as Commissioner Wigan pointed out, you see a report every month. The FCDC board sees a report every month, and the county commission sees a report every month. So if funds are drying down, there's a lot of people that will have an opportunity to say, we need to stop that today. So that's, that's kind of a little bit of the background on it. But I certainly respected the decision and the lead, and the leadership of the commission. I know you all support FCDC, and that's not the issue that we're discussing tonight. And I fully respect that.
So. Sorry. Commissioner Skidmore, just a quick question of Paul. Paul, the decision to put money in reserves and take money out, is that a board decision? It's not your decision, is that correct?
Yeah, the board would have to approve that. That's right. I don't, I don't get to do that arbitrarily.
All right, thanks.
Well, Madam Mayor, this is Commissioner Jorgensen. And, and Paul, I did hear you saying that putting money into the reserve is a goal. How would the, the commission feel that if we changed the language somewhat instead of being a requirement of ten percent, that we encourage the, encourage FCDC to continue to put money into reserves to build a economic development fund? Keeping, keeping some line within there that can be changed in the future? Is that watered down too much?
I appreciate the intent on that, Commissioner Jorgensen, or what I believe to think is your intent. I just, I continue to go back to, I think ten percent is just the beginning. And that's six thousand dollars a year that goes in. And that is not alone going to build a reserve fund, but it does start to build it. I mean, you have to, I mean, obviously, we have two bankers on here, and if you don't say, start with one penny, you can't get the next penny. And then you can't get the next penny, and you can't get the next penny. So I guess I really feel like, as a commissioner and as a citizen, I really still want us to be making a commitment that six thousand dollars is not a tremendous amount put into a reserve account every year.
Mayor, I might, I might suggest then, if, if you don't ever want those funds touched unless it's for, you know, maybe assisting the, the close of deal, the current agreement allows us to use those funds for the things we just used them for this past year. So I think if your, if your concern is making sure that that doesn't happen, you're going to need to change the wording and make it a little more restrictive than it is now to reach the objective you're, that I'm hearing. And if you want to do it, that's okay. I'm not, again, I'm thankful for the support. Please know that. And I'm happy to, happy to do whatever you folks feel is best for the community. But if, if I'm hearing you right, Mayor, then actually, the wording needs to be more restricted than the current agreement.
If I may, Mayor, this is Commissioner Jorgensen again. And I think, like, like I said earlier, putting money towards the marketing plan is something that you do not every year. It's not an operating cost. It is, it is, it's an extraordinary cost or a, I don't want to call it a capital expense, but it's, it's a, it's something that's out of the ordinary operating cost. And I'm perfectly fine with using the money for a marketing plan or, or using it for a labor shed study, or using it for something else that is, is a unique type situation that doesn't occur every year.
I would absolutely agree with you, Commissioner Jorgensen. And I think that if we go back to ten years ago, when we didn't even have this account, we couldn't have, we couldn't have funded a marketing campaign.
Yeah. In fact, I remember the first labor shed study that we did, we had to, we had to get funding from both the count, special funding from the county and from the city and, and from industry partners, because OFCED did not have the funds on hand in order to do that.
And I guess to me, that seems like that's proof that that reserve account is working for what it's supposed to be, what it's designed to do. But I mean, Paul, if you want additional doc, or additional guidance in there, I mean, we can certainly put that in there. I like that it's broad, and it says to you, hey, this reserve account is for, honestly, it doesn't say a whole lot to what it's for, except for it's those extraordinary, and I know there's got to be a banking term for it, but it's.
Extraordinary or extraordinary.
Sure. And expenses that we necessarily wouldn't have every year. We, if you come back to us every single year, Paul, and say, another marketing study, you know that, I know you wouldn't do that. Or another labor shed study every single six months. Well, I just know we wouldn't do that. But when we need one, we need one. And wouldn't it be nice if we could draw down from those reserve funds to do that?
Mayor Kayler, the reserves have really been built up over the last few years. You've got about ten years' worth of what we would ask Paul to put in reserves in the last couple of years, if I'm correct. So I just point that out, that there are reserves, and they're necessary. And I think their board is very prudent on how they spend their money. So I'm, that's all I have to say.
I agree. I think that the single fact that we are continuing to grow that reserve fund is an absolute wonderful thing. Any other conversation or any comments, questions, anything before we proceed to vote? Do we need clarification on what the motion is?
I think you need to go on the amendment first.
Just, I was looking at Commissioner Skidmore. It's hard when you're looking at the Brady Bunch crew. I'm trying to figure out who is yes or no. Okay. So we will vote on, we will proceed to vote on the amendment, which would amend, amend the motion. Do you need clarification on that amendment?
Can we hear the amendment? Can we hear the amendment again?
City Clerk Reed, do you have that? Or would you like to clear, or would you like to state it, Commissioner Jorgensen?
I believe the, the amendment would be to use the language as a, as a red last, under the last contract.
So leave the contract the same?
Yeah. Or add, add back the language, I think, is, is what the amendment was.
Any clarification on that? All right, then we will proceed to vote on the amendment, please.
How do you vote, Commissioner Skidmore?
I vote no.
Commissioner, Mayor Protem Crowley?
I vote no.
Commissioner Wigan?
I vote no.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Mayor Kayler?
And I vote yes. Motion fails. We are back on the, or I'm sorry, the amendment fails. We're back on the motion. So as clarification, the motion was to approve the funding agreement with FCDC, which did include, which omitted the savings portion, the savings requirement of ten percent of the sixty four thousand dollars that we allocate to FCDC every year. Did I have that correct?
That's correct.
Is there any discussion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, there already is a motion. We're, we've motioned, and we've seconded, and we're on, we're on discussion, and then we'll vote.
Can we hear the motion again?
Commissioner Skidmore made the motion. I would say the motion that we would amend the contract to the one that's presented by Paul Bean.
Any discussion? Then we will proceed to vote.
How do you vote, Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowley?
Yes.
Commissioner Wigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
No.
Mayor Kayler?
And I vote no. Motion carries. Read to two. Thank you, Paul, again. And I feel very confident in saying this is not a direct reflection on you. We think you're doing an amazing job.
No, and again, I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate the message. It is fully our intent that we're going to run surpluses and keep building that, that reserve. But I, again, thank you for your support and your partnership. Deeply, deeply appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. That moves us on to item seventeen on the agenda.
Request for approval of funding agreement with Elizabeth Layton Center.
This funding agreement is for services in 2021, and I believe that Leslie Bjark is on with us tonight to have a conversation about this funding agreement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On behalf of Elizabeth Layton Center, we have really enjoyed the partnership with the city of Ottawa for approximately five years. The funding agreement that we have had. The funding agreement that we have had contributes $4,000 to our ability to provide services, both behavioral health, mental health, and substance use disorder treatment to the citizens of Ottawa. So, we're very thrilled with that partnership and really appreciate the chance to provide those services as well as to work with our local law enforcement partners around crisis intervention provision of services. I think in addition to my thanks to the commission for that past partnership and hopes of a continued partnership in 2021, I would just like a moment to share with the citizens watching that one of four of us will experience a mental health challenge and diagnosis in our lifetime. And the early research suggests that coronavirus is making that challenge even more difficult. And so, mental health and substance use disorders are real and there is help available. And just like other chronic conditions like diabetes, getting early treatment, early detection is, is key. Elizabeth Layton Center is among your service providers in Ottawa and we welcome your contacting us in need. And we are happy to provide our services face-to-face, by televideo and by telephone. So, I encourage those with questions or in need to contact us. And again, I truly thank the commission for our partnership. I would be happy to stand for questions.
Commissioners, are there questions for Leslie?
Leslie, it's Commissioner Wigan, Mayor Taylor. I just, my understanding is your services are deeply discounted to the user based upon their family income and support from the county and city and all your other supporters, correct?
Commissioner Wigan, thank you for bringing that up. We can certainly offer much affordability, many options for our citizens of Ottawa, for Franklin County residents and as well as Miami County residents, yes. We accept all, most all forms of insurance as well as Medicaid. In addition to that, for folks who have no payer source, our Franklin County citizens can benefit from a sliding scale fee for services, which as you mentioned, is based upon household income and number of dependents. Even beyond the sliding scale fee, we offer even further affordability options. We don't want money to stand in the way of necessary treatment and we provide crisis services 24/7 regardless of any ability to pay.
Good, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Commissioner?
I move to approve the, the funding agreement as described in item 17 of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner Wigan seconds that.
Great. Is there any discussion among commissioners? I just wanna say, I know that oftentimes we give our two bankers kind of, we kind of give them the, the throw every once in a while and, and remind others that we have baking expertise on here. But I'm a social worker by trade and I know the importance of mental health and making sure that not only is your body physically taken care of, but your mind is taken care of too. And I oftentimes tell people that the brain is the most misunderstood organ that we have in our body. We don't understand how it works all the time. And it's not a sign of weakness if you need help. We would never ask somebody who has a broken leg to get out and run a marathon. And we shouldn't ask somebody who has some challenges going on and their complicated brain to get out and do things that they can't do either. So, I'm super excited about this continued, this continued agreement with Elizabeth Layton Center. And I will gleefully vote yes.
Thank you.
Commissioners, anything else? If not, we will proceed to vote.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Wigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowley?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore?
I vote yes.
Mayor Taylor?
And the mayor votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you all so much. Very grateful for your support.
Thank you. That moves us on to item 18 on the agenda.
Request for approval of ordinance amending section 2-303 of municipal code on city officers residency.
This, this ordinance amends to the municipal code to allow officers of the city, which includes city clerk, city treasurer, director of finance, director of public works, director of utilities, director of human resources, director of information technology, director of community development, chief of police, fire chief, and such others, and such other officers as commissioners deem necessary to reside within 35 miles of the corporate limits of the City of Ottawa within six months of appointment as an officer to the city. The city manager shall reside within the city limits. The city manager may grant an exception to this requirement for any officer other than him or herself. I believe that our city manager will be addressing this matter.
Richard Neinstedt, city manager, thank you, Mayor. The mayor, the, the summary statement is what you have before you. I, so I would be happy to stand for any questions.
Pardon me.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Jorgensen. And I just wanna, this, this has been characterized as, as city employees, but what we have been considering for the last 17 years, no, three months, two, three months, has been to allow the, the 10 officers as named in that discussion to have the same, enjoy the same flexibility as what the, the rest of the employees in, of the city enjoy. Is that correct?
It is, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I do wanna apologize for my teenage daughter. She's got some laughter that she's going to share. It's not about the residency policy, I can guarantee you. But she's a teenager. That happens. We get the giggles sometimes. Is there any questions that you may have?
Mayor Taylor, Mr. Wigan, I think the only thing we've changed about it is we give the city manager some latitude as far as the requirements go. That's, that is, that's a correct statement, isn't it?
No, I believe that there was additional changes made, correct? City Manager Neinstedt? That it, it grew the boundaries beyond Franklin County?
Yeah, it did. It allows, it allows your department heads to live outside of Franklin County, but they have to still be within 35 miles of the city limits.
Okay, thank you. I stand corrected.
Are there other questions? Comments? Is there a motion? I would certainly entertain one.
Commissioner Wigan, I will make that motion to approve the, the new ordinance.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Jorgensen, seconds.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Wigan and the second has been made by Commissioner Jorgensen to approve the ordinance amending section 2-303 of the municipal code on city officers residency. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Taylor, Commissioner Skidmore likes to speak.
Yes.
I, I think, I'm thinking this probably be more of the exception than the rule. I don't think it's gonna come up very often personally. I, I think when we hire and develop and promote directors or, or we call them officers, I think they're going to want to live in Ottawa. I think to require them to live here seems a little bit restrictive and I think they're going to want to live. And if they want to live here, I think they'll stay here longer. So, I, I like the way it's written and I'll be voting yes. And I, I trust our city manager current and I trust our future city managers, they'll make this right decision with regard to the exception policy.
Commissioners, other comments? If not, we will proceed to vote.
How do you vote, Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowley?
Yes.
Commissioner Wigan?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
And I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. I'm gonna give Melissa just a chance to take a breath and we're on item 19.
Request for approval of community development block grant, CV grant application.
We're on revival, or revitalized creations and decor. Has applied for a grant in the amount of $5,707.76. I believe that Mrs. Lee will be addressing this matter this evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Wendy Lee, Director of Community Development. This is an application for the grant that we received and we were able to pass that on. We received originally $132,000 in funds and this is the most recent application. The application was reviewed by city staff as well as a consultant, reviewed all of the invoices, et cetera, to be sure that everything complied with the requirements that the State of Commerce has for these funds. And we're pleased to tell you that this is the amount that they're eligible for. That it would enable retention of one position. The review committee also met and considered this and voted to pass on to you that they would recommend approval of this grant.
Commissioners, do you have questions of Mrs. Lee regarding this request?
Commissioner Crowley here.
Yes, Commissioner.
Sorry. Once again, I'm, I'm happy to see that this is being used to help some of our small businesses and, and local people around here. So, that being said, I'd like to approve item 19.
Commissioner Crowley makes a motion to approve item 19. Is there a second?
Commissioner Skidmore will second that.
Commissioner Skidmore makes, or seconds the motion. Is there any discussion among commissioners? If not, we will proceed to vote.
Do you vote, Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Wigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowley?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
I vote yes. Motion carries. That moves us on to item 20 on our agenda.
Approval of bid for Don Woodward Building at 517 East Third Street in Ottawa.
Sealed bids were received for the building and publicly opened on February 2nd, 2021. One bid was received from Ottawa Raptors Club in the amount of $52,500. Staff recommends approval of this bid. Wendy Lee? Would you like to address this matter?
I'd be glad to, Mayor. Again, this is Wendy Lee with the Community Development Director. This is sort of a combined effort, this, this, this bid project. As we have talked with you all, because you are the ones that asked us to put this bid together. The, the Don Woodward Building has been vacant since the last flood. It flooded, it flooded twice last year. And so, the question began, became whether we should put any additional funds in. And staff recommended to you that we consider selling the building. So, we did open bids yesterday. There was only one bid received. There were several other people who took a look at the building. So, it, it had a good look by a number of different people. We also got some calls. What's really not in the bid, but I would, I, some of the questions we got that I think might help you as well have to do with some of the maintenance needs, some of the capital improvement needs and even the utility bills. So, for example, one of the folks that was looking at the building said, well, what has the past utility usage been? And I thought, well, that's a great question, because I, you know, that was up to other entities who were using the building. So, we went back to look at when the building was being occupied. And, and you should know that, you know, the average bill, if you were to take the 12 months average of just the city utilities, was probably $350 to $370 a month. The high bill was in the summer when it's hot. And of course, with a gymnasium, it's got a real high ceiling. That bill was over $1,000. So, it, it, it isn't just a building. It has costs to even have for regular, regular costs. The city was responsible for a lot of the more capital things. And right now, we know because of the flooding, the air conditioner system would have to be replaced as well as just the recovery from the flood. But the upper gymnasium roof was a capital item that was coming and staff felt like that per capita funds are precious enough that those would be better spent in buildings that we do regular public business out of, such as City Hall or the Police Department. And we shared with you last year during the budget, some of the capital needs in those buildings that have gone unfunded. And so, just for the public's sake, that's a little bit of a history of how we kinda got here. We did receive the one building, as you read, one bid, sorry, on the building. I know that the, the folks that have supplied us that contract are on the call today. What we would as staff submit to you is that if you should accept this bid, then we would have our city attorney and you, and if you would authorize the city manager to sign documents, the city attorney would draft and work with the bid folks to finalize contracts to, to transfer that sale. The only question, the only other question I wanna be sure that I've asked is if you have any conditions that you want made relative to the sale that we should convey to our city attorney to be sure that we've met your expectations for this.
Commissioners, do you have questions for Mrs. Lee?
Madam Mayor, this is Commissioner Jorgensen. The, the parking, parking lot that's adjacent to it is, is a city parking lot or sounds city property. And, and looking at the original plaque or there, I think somebody had written, highlighted a possible division there. It didn't look like there was sufficient parking without using the city's lot. Is, is, is the intention to have a joint use agreement for that, that parking lot?
Yes, I, we, we put one of the conditions in the actual bid and I should have probably said that, so I appreciate that, Commissioner, was that they, that they entered to a shared parking area. To be, to be clear about that delineation and responsibility, because certainly if the parking lot were just to deteriorate, we'd wanna, just like any other shared parking arrangement, we'd wanna have those overlays or restripings or what have you done at the same time. As well as, you know, for the most part, it is a city parking lot and so people park there. That's the goal of it. But we'd wanna have some clear understandings about our relationship related to that. I should have also said for the public's sake that we did say, and it is, it is clear in our offer that we will not finance this deal and that if it is executed, we would wanna close within 90 days. We did require a letter of guaranteeing credit. We did receive one and I should have told you that as well. And so, and in this, we had said that we wanted to retain the right of first refusal, but that really would be up to you if you want to have that clause in there as well.
But I think with that, that parking lot, it seems like a right of first refusal would make sense because depending on what the use of that, of that facility might be in the future. But I do see that Jason's on the call. Perhaps, Mayor, with your indulgence, we could ask him to kinda tell us what his plan is use of the facility is gonna be.
Commissioner Jorgensen, I want you to know that, that great minds think alike. I had contacted Jason earlier this evening or this afternoon to ask him if he'd like to address the city commission regarding this particular property and I'm glad to see he's joining us. So, Mr. Beers, would you like to address the commission regarding what you've got planned for the Don Woodward Building?
Well, thank you guys for having me and I appreciate it. What we would like to is help develop our youth. So, we're gonna be using it to run softball, baseball. We're also gonna have the Ottawa Map Masters practice out of there. You know, I'm just trying to give that extra opportunity for kids to go and use and try to get better and learn what it takes when you fail, when you have success. Just trying to do the right thing to help develop everybody and give everybody a chance instead of us driving, you know, to Alatha or to Topeka or to Lawrence. You know, we have a lot of kids that come here as far as, you know, parking goes. Talked to Wendy Lee with that and I'm completely fine with what she has drawn up and I am happy to do my part. We're just thankful for the opportunity. Opportunity from you guys, just amazing. We needed a chance for success, because we, we spend a lot of time with our kids and we can do it here and not drive as far. It makes up huge at home and in the classroom and everything we're doing. So, I do appreciate that from all of you.
Commissioner Crowley here. Mr. Beers, you, you've used the term.
Mr. Beers, you, you've used the term a lot when you say a lot of kids. Could you, could you give me a definition of a lot? Like, how many kids? I know you've got a lot of teams. So could you tell me roughly how many teams and then roughly how many kids are involved?
So currently, I kind of put growing the baseball softball teams at a whole, almost, just because we're running out of space. We're running out of places to give kids a chance to go practice. So we're, we have over a hundred and twenty softball players. We have almost thirty baseball players, and we're going to start tryouts up here pretty soon. So we can, if, if we do get the building, which hopefully we do, that's my goal, and we continue to grow. Once we do that, then I'm going to probably try to grow to another seven to ten baseball teams from there. So we got about a hundred and forty families altogether, and we're ranging from Burlington, Alatha, Paola, Gardinet, Linden. I have kids from Iowa that drive up. I mean, this is a huge impact, so. Over a hundred and twenty softball and thirty baseball kids.
Thank you.
Commissioner Skidmore, I've got a quick question to Mr. Beers. Is this some of the programs you have, are they fee based? And if they are, is the scholarships available for the, for the children?
That is a great question, and I'm glad you asked me that. You know, up till every year this year, I've only asked for a hundred dollars. The services that we provide and the opportunities that we give are well over that, over well over a thousand dollars. But I asked for a hundred dollars, and then we fundraised the rest. This year, at every tryout, I announced that we would like to try to buy a building. And so we raised it to three hundred dollars. Every kid. With baseball, it's still been a hundred dollars because I'm trying to grow that. Softball, you know, them counting on me, us getting a, was three hundred bucks. I've never once went back to anybody that, hey, you know what? You didn't, you didn't make your deal. I'm going to need you to do this. I'm going to need you to do that. And that's because the ability to fundraise, we've had parents and players to overdo it. I can tell you right now, I've got a fam, I've got four families that have three or more kids in our club, and I give them a discount as well for doing that, just because that's a lot on a family, and that's what I'm trying to do. That is my goal. I have four kids in the program myself. You know, we got parents running around from here, here to there, but the whole thing is to keep the cost down and do it effective. You know, you go to one of these tryouts or college things, you're paying over a hundred and fifty dollars just for that. We're giving those same kind of lessons at our practices at, at a cheap rate. So I feel like yes.
Commissioners, other questions?
When, Mr. Commissioner Crowley here again, when, when Mr. Beers talks about the things that he does, he, he, he actually, I mean, he's not just speaking. He practices what he preaches and what, and when, when we had, I'm sure a lot of you know, a local family that, that had a tragic farm accident that lost a family. They, they stepped up for that family and, and put a tournament on and raised a significant amount of money for that family to help them for, through a, a terrible time of need that they had. So these are great stewards of our community. I'm glad to hear that, that they, I mean, I'm glad to hear that they got the building. Quite frankly, glad to hear nobody else bid against them. It would have been difficult to have to make a decision, quite honestly. They, that the folks maybe saw that coming and didn't want us to have to make that decision. My only concern at this point is, and this is more of a commission question. We've, we've kind of put them behind the ball, since we, we've kind of put that out there and said, let's get, let's take some bid for the next thirty days. We know that the seasons are starting, baseball, softball, and so on and so forth is starting. Is there anything that we can do as a commission to expedite them getting into the building in the meantime, so they can get their process started?
Mrs. Lee, can you address that?
I think if you're willing to do the contract with them, we'll work hard to make sure everything works well with them. The only thing that I have to say as a caveat is they understand the floodplain situation, so that was affecting. But it's the zoning situation that we have to start on as well. However, I think as long as we're, we all understand whatever happens in the meantime is predicated on what happens in the long term. I'm sure if we're going through a zoning process with them, they want to complete that. That's why we did the ninety days, just for clarity and transparency for others. So I think we, you know, part of the reason for having it tonight is so that, that they can get their application put together and get that part started. But, you know, we've had the building used recreationally, and I, and we're, we're comfortable with recreation use and letting them get in there if you are.
Does that answer your question, Mayor Portem Crowley?
Commissioner Crowley here. It, it does. On, on Wendy's part, I think, I don't know if that's our decision to say, yes, I think we can allow them to start using the building. And if, and if it is our decision, then I guess that's the question I'm asking is, do the other Commissioners and Mayor you, do you guys feel comfortable allowing them to, to start using that building?
The only, the only question I would have would be an insurance issue. And so I think that we would probably want to address that with our city attorney to make sure that there is no liability on the city's part. And I, I get it. I, and here's, and what I was going to say after, here in a second, was, I mean, my, I looked back at, when I text Jason that the Zoom meeting, and I realized it was four years ago, and he had my daughter in, in softball. And so, you know, I appreciate all that they're doing. I just want to make sure that we can legally allow people to be there. And it appears as though our city manager has something to say about that.
Thank you, Mayor. Richard Nine said, hey, Mayor. Commissioners, I assure you, we're going to do everything we can to get this moved so that Jason's group has control of that building and will initiate a discussion with the city attorney. And please remember, you all do real estate deals every day. And, and as much as you'd like to have possession of the property, there are some legal issues that go along with that and liability issues go along with that. But we will talk to the city attorney, and we will do the best we can do to get Jason in there so they can start using that property ahead of time. And Wendy, you just might talk to the commission about what paperwork that Jason has to file with the planning commission at this point.
So he'll act as the agent, the buyer, and file an application to rezone that out of a public classification. Well, I, I've, you know, Jason, I'm not looking at my notes now, but I know we talked about which zoning district, so we'll have to get that done. And really, we'll, he'll turn his application, and then we'll finish working. The city attorney will then, also, if you authorize moving forward with acceptance of the bid, the city attorney will start all the rest of the paperwork. They've submitted a contract. Blaine has that in review now. And he will, he will take it through all of the closing and et cetera, as directed by you with these conditions unless you wish to change it. And I confirmed that with him today. So it is just a matter of you accepting the bid and then authorizing us to move forward, understanding all the things we've just been discussing. The, the zoning would obviously come back up for discussion as a separate item after the public hearings held in front of the planning commissions.
Other questions?
Commissioner Wigan, I just got a real estate thing here, and I'm sure I know the answer. But we, we will have a state survey of the amount of the property that we'll know the boundaries and everything. That's probably in your legal description anyway in the bid.
Well, Commissioner Wigan, this is Wendy Lee, Director of Community Development. We didn't anticipate doing a survey. This is a platted tract. It's, it's a legal described tract.
It's totally separate from pickleball and everything. Okay, I understand.
Yes, it is. So because those lots were described many years ago, we were planning to use that. Now, the, the buyer may want to confirm those corner points, but, but we had not planned to do a survey of it.
Okay, I understand that then, yeah.
Any other additional questions? Yes, would you like to address?
Commissioner Skidmore, I didn't know if we need to make the, the sale subject to the zoning.
Jason, was that one of your conditions in the offer?
No. I thought what every, I thought what you sent out for people to bid on was exactly what we talked about.
Yeah. And so, so what we just said was that they need to understand that they need to go through that process, and we're obviously allowing the ninety days so they can go through the process. They have until the end of that time to, they can just elect not to close.
Okay.
It's like any other sale, as I understand it.
Then that's fine. Okay, Commissioner Skidmore again. Well, first of all, I want to say, Mr. Beers, thanks for waiting all evening to the last item on the agenda. So I think it's very important, and I, and I do appreciate your patience too, that we had to go full circle to do this. You full well know that we have to have full transparency when we have a sale of a public building like this. And so I appreciate your patience in working with us through this bid process. So with all that said, I'm looking forward to, I will say, I'll make the motion we approve item twenty on our agenda.
Commissioner Sally here. I'm sure Mr. Beers wasn't only here for this part of the meeting. I'm sure he was happily enjoying everything else. But yes, I, I would like to second that motion too.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? I actually have one discussion point. I believe that I told Jason that it would be seven thirty or after. I did, full disclosure, I gave him a thirty minute window. He could just breathe and then cut, join us. So I noticed he didn't join us at the beginning, but I'm glad you did join us. And then I just for, make sure for clarification, the first right of refusal, I, I, I would like to make sure that's still in there. We want to continue to have that. Commissioner Jorgensen did allude to it, but I'm not sure that we actually solidified it.
That was on, I know Wendy Lee probably know better than I, but when I put in my bid, it was on there that Ottawa, the city had the first right of refusal when I put it in there.
And that remains. And Mrs. Lee?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Is there any other discussion or comments from this commission?
I, can I say a couple of things?
Sure.
All right. First, I want to, you know, you asked me questions and I answered them, but I just want to say I'm very thankful for the opportunity. You know, I did coach Ava for five years ago in rec when I started out here in Ottawa, as my first time coaching in Ottawa, as I played baseball here. Secondly, I want to say thank you to Wendy Lee for all her hard work with meeting with me and Mallory Hall for taking care of me and answering that. I know that you guys have big tasks on your plates every single day. But our success or failure as a city, parent, individual, or a coach is a direct reflection of our ability to plan and develop. And I know you guys work hard for that, so I am thankful for that. We're about to be on an absolutely amazing journey together, and I'm ecstatic for the opportunity to prove why you guys believe in us. And I'm here to give back as much as we can. You know, we do a lot of fundraising, but I try to give back and do a lot for the community, as I know that Commissioner Crowley has brought up. But, you know, I believe that we need to teach kids and, you know, even some, at sometimes to be humble. And you, you give as much as you, and you give more than what you receive. So it's very, you know, touching for you guys to do this for us. I just need a chance. That's all I'm asking for, and I'm thankful for that.
Well, thank you so much. That was lovely. Any other questions, comments, Commissioners? Then we will proceed to vote.
Commissioner Wigan?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowley?
Yes.
Mayor Kayler?
And my vote is play ball, which is yes. We are so happy for you, and we're excited to see the good things that come out of the Don Woodward Center. And I might want to say, I think Don Woodward, although I didn't know him, I think he would be excited about this. So thank you. That moves us to item twenty one on our agenda, which is our report by the city manager. He has three or four hours to, of comments to give us, and so there you go.
I was thinking about talking about fifteen or twenty items, but because of the late hour, I, I don't want to, I, I wouldn't want to keep hearing that. But I have one thing. I greatly appreciate your willingness to allocate funds to Elizabeth Leyton Center. Mental health is a, is a priority, and it's always been of interest to my wife, Rita and I. And we do everything we can to help ensure that the people around us, that our organizations have proper mental health training, and they have people they can talk to. We have an EAP, and, and we utilize a lot of different entities for that. And I also have two, we have two daughters who are involved in mental health. One works for Crosswinds Mental Health Agency over in Lyon County. And the other is, and I hate to admit this, because there are a lot of similarities, is a social worker like Sarah is and works for an agency in Jeff City, Missouri. But I just, I wish we could, my plan a couple of years ago was to come to you and increase that allocation. They do get money from each of the counties, but I think that's not enough to do what the task is before us. And trust me, if you believe in six degrees of separation, you can look around you and you can find people that are very close to you that need mental health, need mental health, health. And we all need, we all need someone at times to talk to about our own mental health. So thank you very much for that allocation.
Thank you, city manager. And I said, are there other comments that you have for us this evening? Okay. And before we start on reports by the city commission, I'm actually going to circle us back up to the top of our agenda, and it's, I think, relatively quick. And we need a, every few years, we have to actually officially appoint someone to the KMEA, which is Kansas Municipal Energy Agency Board of Directors. And that time is this year that we need to approve in an open meeting my appointment to the KMEA board. So if there's a motion, I would entertain a person to appoint me.
Commissioner Crowley, make the motion to approve Mayor Kayler to the KMEA board.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that Commissioner Kayler be appointed to the KMEA board. Is there any discussion? All right. All those, and we'll actually, we'll, we'll vote.
Commissioner Skidmore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowley?
Yes.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Kayler?
And I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you for that. Sorry that we had to go back up and come back down, but that was the quickest we've ever gone through an agenda. We move on to reports by our city commissioners. Mayor Portem Crowley, what do you have for us this evening?
I have no report. Thank you.
Commissioner Wigan?
I have no report. We did a lot of good things tonight and had a lot of good discussion, and I think that's a good thing. So life is good. Thank you.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yeah, I agree with Tom on that. I think, yeah, we had good discussion, and we don't always have to agree on everything, but we have good and respectful discussion. And I still say our, our friends in DC could take a lesson from all of us, I think, couldn't they? I'd also like to congratulate Melissa on a good job tonight. You did a great job, Melissa. You must have had a good teacher in Misty Kim's, I feel. So maybe whoever taught you, they did a good job too. But good job. Congratulations. I think you'll do well in this position. So congratulations again. And with regard to Commissioner Jorgensen's prayer, I think as bankers, we typically don't like that trespasses prayer. We, we like that, I should say. We don't like the one where we start talking about forgiving debts, and that's all I have to say.
If, I don't believe it would be a meeting if Commissioner Skidmore did not make a light, lighten it up. So thank you. We've missed that. Commissioner Skidmore, Commissioner Jorgensen?
Maybe along what Commissioner Skidmore was doing, but I, I remember some comments earlier this meeting that Mayor Kayler and also our city manager had said about social workers and so forth. But I've got two brothers that are lawyers, and they have all things kid me about being a banker. And the, but they're, they're, they asked the question, how can you tell which eye is a glass eye in a banker and is, is the one that shows compassion? But when we're, we're talking about social workers, I am not a social worker, but I am married to one, so I'm closely related to the social worker. So we're, we're in good company. That's all I have.
I, I can't even believe I'm going to do this, and I think it's the first time in ten years I've ever told a joke. I cannot believe I I cannot believe I'm going to do it. But how many social workers does it take to change a light bulb? None. The light bulb has to want to change itself. So, I know, it was horrible. Sorry, and I won't do it again, I promise. But I just had to. But lighten it up there, a couple jokes. But in all reality, the one thing that I did want to point out is that in this meeting, and this rarely happens in our meeting, we did not have a complete vote that was absolutely on one side or absolutely on the other side. And that is not bad. It is not bad that we have conversations that we don't absolutely agree. And I think it points out that we all individually really want great things for our community. We all just have a different thought of how we're going to get there, and no thought is bad. Actually, conversation is good, and that's how growth happens. And so, the single fact that we did not have a vote that was a complete 5-0 vote is a very good thing. And I think that tells us that as a commission, we feel comfortable enough to stand up for what we believe and still to respect what our fellow commissioners, their thoughts and their sentiments are. So, kind, kind conversation is a good thing. And so, good job, commissioners, good job. That brings us to the end of our meeting, and I want to just read a few announcements, and then we'll let you go for the evening. February 8th, we have our study session via Zoom at 4:00 p.m. February 15th, we have our study session at 4:00 p.m. via Zoom. And February 17th, we have our regular meeting at 10:00 a.m. via Zoom. If there's nothing else to be brought forward to the commission this evening, we thank you for joining us and for being part of the process. Have a good evening. Thank you.